Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Dover City Council meeting for August 11th, 2014. We will begin this evening by our invocation, with our invocation by Bishop Tom Holsey, followed by the pledge to our nation's flag led by Merrick Crum.
Father, we come before you once again asking for wisdom, understanding, and knowledge on how to carry out the mandates for our community. But we ask God, why are you a blessing? I want you to touch Mr. Andy Segal. He was in an unfortunate accident this morning, and we ask God that you touch his body. You're the only one that can stop the bleeding. You're the only one that can bring the heal and the deliverance to him. Touch his wife and give us strength right now. Father, we pray that you move in a mighty way in their behalf. Bless their families and all our families. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, gentlemen. Counselor, you have before you this evening's agenda at the request of Dr. Mattern's family. I would like to defer item number two, these fifths of graduations, to be moved September 8th. Are there any other additions or deletions, Mr. Persson?
If not, I entertain proof that--
Yes, I would like to make a suggestion that item number 10 be passed for one council session, but they allow some additional opportunity to inquire additional information and for Mr. Anderson to be present. As I understand, Mr. Lynn was also not going to be present, but he's apparently here. So, but at least for Mr. Anderson's benefit for purposes of doing that, that we pass it one session.
Thank you, sir. And that's in the form of a motion?
Sure.
All right. Second? Second by Mr. Dixon. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right. One of, one no vote. Councilman Lynn, this item is deferred until the next council session. Now I have before you the agenda as amended.
So who--
By Mr. Hutchison. Second by Mr. Dixon. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now I have before you the consent agenda. Those items on the council agenda that are considered routine and non-controversial were marked with an asterisk and will be acted upon by a single roll call vote of council. There'll be no separate discussion of the items unless a member of council requests, in which event the matter shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item, which is pleasure of council.
Move the approval of consent agenda.
By Mr. Slaven.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hutchison. Any questions on the motion? I'm sorry, Mr. Herr. It was sounding the same. Any question, any questions on the motion? See none, Madam Clerk, probable.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Persson?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Herr?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Item number three on the agenda this evening, presentation by the Delaware Department of Transportation, highway active, rather, high intensity activated crosswalks, or HAWK, signal located at Heatherfield Way and Route 8, the New Dover High School east entrance. Mark Lutz, would you like to come down? Mark is a traffic engineer for the Delaware Department of Transportation. Go ahead, sir.
Okay. Thank you for having me tonight. Hopefully, the technology all works here. So, as presented, I wanted to talk about, I was asked to talk about the proposed HAWK signal that's going in on the east entrance to the New Dover High School. So, the HAWK signal, as it's termed, is kind of the nickname for it. The technical engineering term is pedestrian hybrid beacon, so you could potentially hear either term used interchangeably. This device was invented in Tucson in the late 90s or early 2000s. They have over 100 of them out in Phoenix, and now they are, they're being used all over the country. Successfully used all over the country. They were officially adopted by the Federal Highway Administration in 2010, and as noted, the goal is to safely control pedestrian and vehicular traffic where there's high volume of pedestrians and vehicles, but we're not at the point where there's so many vehicles or pedestrians that you would warrant a real full traffic signal as we're all used to, red, yellow, and green. This is just a quick chart that shows various kinds of innovative crosswalk treatments that was based on a study done in Texas, by Texas Transportation Institute about eight years ago. And you can see that there's several on the right end where you don't get very good yielding percentages to pedestrians, things that we use more commonly like flashing beacons. Whereas, the HAWK signal had a very high compliance rate where more motor vehicles yielded to pedestrians. I believe the next slide is a video which hopefully will work, and we'll see how that goes.
Pedestrian hybrid beacon, also known as the HAWK signal, normally shows dark indications to be in progress, and a solid hand indication signifies don't walk. Once the pedestrian pushes the crosswalk button, the HAWK wakes up by displaying flashing yellow to indicate clear traffic, and then goes to solid yellow. Similar type of traffic signal means the signal is about to turn red. The pedestrian continues to see the don't walk signal after the HAWK turns solid red. Pedestrian signal changes depending on caution.
Mark, as they say in the broadcast industry, we're having technical difficulties. Others may be able to hear it, but I don't think many of us on council can hear the audio on this. You might want to just go ahead.
I can, I can play it again and kind of talk it through myself. It's a short video, in fact. That's it.
Can I start it over?
Yes, if that's, if that makes sense, I'll start it over and again. I'll speak towards it a little bit more. So, basically, what it's showing, this, before you start it, what this is showing is the one HAWK signal that we have in Delaware right now, it's up on the southeast side of Newark. It's for, it connects, well, there's a University of Delaware outbuilding for their ag college. And it's somewhat similar situation where it's, it's obviously college, not high school, but sporadic pedestrian traffic and relatively high vehicular speeds and volumes. So, yes, if you want to play it again, I'll try to talk it through. So, again, what this is showing is, is how it's working. So, after it gets through this intro screen here, it shows that the HAWK signal is normally dark. So, vehicular traffic sees dark, pedestrian traffic sees the hand that you're always used to seeing as a pedestrian signal. So, our sample pedestrian there pushed the button, and what happens is the HAWK kind of wakes up. It flashes yellow. It tells motor vehicle driver something's going to happen. Then it goes to yellow, like a normal traffic signal. Then it goes to red, like a normal traffic signal. Obviously, the shape is different. And then the walk indication comes on for the pedestrian. So, vehicular traffic is stopping, pedestrians have the walk. Then it goes to the flashing don't walk phase, and you can see the countdown there. That, that's kind of the, what's significantly different about the HAWK signal than a regular traffic signal is when it's in that countdown phase, which means to the pedestrian, if you started, you can finish your crossing, but if you haven't started, you're legally not allowed to start. So, during that countdown phase, the vehicular heads go to a flashing indication, which now means that vehicular traffic treat it like a stop sign. So, they're still required to stop, but if the pedestrian's not in their way, then they can proceed.
Mrs. Williams has a question, Mark.
I'm glad you brought the University of Delaware, because during the entire time I was there, I don't believe I ever followed, nor did any of my classmates, any signal properly. My concern, and I think everyone's concern that's talked about this, is what happens when you get a flood? The countdown expires, the signal goes green again, but everybody keeps on walking across. What does the HAWK signal do at that point?
The, after the countdown's done, and it goes to, after the countdown's done, it goes to solid hand, so that's don't walk.
But what if people don't comply?
Well, let me tell you what it does first, and then we'll get to that. What it would do is that there's, there's a pre-programmed time where it would stay dark to allow vehicular traffic to flush. So, while this is all going on, vehicular traffic may be stacking up. So, the, the way it would work is there's a pre-programmed time that vehicular traffic would flush, a legally behaving pedestrian would push the button, and they would wait to get the walk indication again. I guess your question there is if pedestrians choose to ignore the signal is really no different than anywhere else in the world where we have pedestrian signals. Pedestrians will choose to comply or not comply.
But it is different. It is different. Because in Newark, if you're crossing Main Street going from the mid-mall to Hollyam Hall, let's say, Northern Campus, and a whole swarm of people goes over, those, those cars going down Main Street are not going at the speed they're going out there on Route 8.
Agree.
And I saw people slam on their brakes many, many times, going 30 and, 30 and 25, because people just went into, is a full swarm. And then--
Oh, I mean--
The difference was that when it was over, when class, it only took about five minutes. When class was convening, then it, it didn't happen for another hour or so.
Sure.
But this is going to be a little different. This is going to be with a much, much greater speed of traffic, and it's going to be without any shoulders or very few, very little shoulder mass for people to pop back to. And it's, it's the, I don't, I don't, I've never timed it, but I think that the school let-out time is about 15 to 20 minutes. Meanwhile, your, if people don't allow the cars to go, the cars are going to back very quickly, all the way back into McDonald's and further toward the Salisbury intersection, which is a major intersection for the city of Dover.
I agree.
And there, is there anything that can be done about that when, when you're at the stage you are now of developing these signals?
Well, part of your concern, I understand what you're saying about Main Street in Newark. I went to University of Delaware also, and, but that's, the flood of pedestrians you have crossing Main Street, mostly at unsignalized locations, is a bit different than here. We do have many traffic signals in less downtown areas, more suburban or even in rural areas where the, from the pedestrian standpoint, it's very similar to this. And again, I can't, I can't force the pedestrian to follow the law or the traffic signal. So, some people will comply and some people won't. But many of the traffic signals we have in Dover, say, on Route 13, are, are similar from the standpoint of it's higher, higher vehicular traffic. And again, legally, the pedestrian has to follow the signal indication, just like legally the vehicles have to follow the vehicle indications.
Can this, can this signal be equipped with a camera for enforcement? Not only car enforcement--
Technically, yes. Legally, no. I can't do camera enforcement except through our official red light enforcement program, and that has, there's all kinds of other difficulties with that, one of which is that, one of the reasons that Delaware has generally not been criticized for our program from the standpoint of, of just trying to get money out of the program, is that we have a very data-driven program where that program focuses on documented crash locations. So, clearly, this is a location where we don't have a documented crash history at this time. So--
So, it's kind of happened before anything can happen?
For the red light program, the way that Delaware treats the red light running, electronic red light running program, it's, it's basically a last, last-ditch effort at a safety solution. Whereas, other jurisdictions have been criticized heavily for arbitrarily installing them or just installing them for the, to make money.
Well, then, my final question again, won't take any more of your time. If the HAWK system doesn't do what it's supposed to, and the enforcement is not to the satisfaction of anyone, what is, what is the remedy then? Is it an officer? What is it?
We could, it has been designed so that conceivably it can be changed in the future to a full traffic signal. But some of the concerns that you have would be the same concerns with a regular traffic signal as with the HAWK signal.
Exactly.
So, that, given the layout of the school and the expected pedestrian traffic and the roadway network, there's not, the main other thing we could conceivably do would be to turn it to a full traffic signal, given all the other things that I just went through.
Thanks.
So, yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Thank you. Thank you for being here. I agree with some of the comments made by Councilperson Williams. I think that what you're sensing is an overall dissatisfaction at DELLDOT's decision not to install a full traffic signal here. During my time on Councilman Hutchinson's Public Safety Advisory Committee, from my sense, that was the impression of our committee, that a full traffic signal was not only warranted, but what was desired, desired by council. And I still believe that today, that a full traffic signal is warranted here. And I'd hate to see that the barometer of whether a full traffic signal is warranted here or not is not DELLDOT's own internal warrants, but some child getting hit by a car on Route 8 trying to get to the New Dover High School. I applaud the efforts of the HAWK unit. I think it's a great idea, but I, in my opinion, a full traffic signal is warranted here. I have debated whether or not council ought to have some type of workshop with Secretary Bott to predict what I think is going to be a traffic crisis on Route 8 when this high school opens. And I would, I would ask you if you could relay that to Secretary Bott, whether she would consider holding some type of workshop with council so that we can prepare for the opening of the New Dover High School. And what I believe the resultant effect thereof is going to be a traffic crisis, at least in the short term, on Route 8. But from my opinion, while I appreciate the HAWK system, I still don't personally believe it's enough. Thank you.
Understand. The, to briefly answer some of that, the school district's own engineering firm, their report indicated that a traffic signal is not justified for this location. So, so we reviewed the report and agreed with its, its results, but their, their own report said that this intersection, given the traffic volumes, the expected pedestrians, the vehicular speeds, and all the other things that go in that study, that this location is not justified for a full traffic signal. There's many other locations where DELLDOT in the past has installed traffic signals where they don't, they were, say, politically strong-armed into putting in traffic signals. And looking back, you can see that they are worse than if you had done nothing. That's one of the reasons why we, we, we look very hard at the situation before we install a new traffic signal, because you, and again, you will get some of that here, but with the, the intent with this is that you stop traffic a bit less than a full traffic signal. Because no matter what we do, we know that we're going, when we're stopping traffic on Route 8, you will have some amount of rear-end crashes. That's going to happen. It, I don't, I can't predict how many, but you'll have some. The intent with this is that it allows the pedestrians to cross, but it stops traffic less than a full traffic signal. I would also say that we are installing a full traffic signal farther to the west, and my hands are tied as to how the school was developed with their access points. So, I can't, I can't control that they have a full, they have a full access and which warranted, and we agreed with, and we worked with the, the school district and the city and others to get that signal installed. And, but the layout is such that that's not feasible for pedestrians to use that traffic signal.
Mr. Hutchison?
Well, the safety committee certainly took a long, hard look at this study and had meetings with the school officials and looked at the HAWK system. And we had our city planner go north and looked at the system operation up in Newark. And one of the things that we all sitting here have, our number one concern is safety. And I certainly feel with the support of the police department, which every year, I can honestly say, every year, they're always there to work with the school. And I'm sure in talking with the chief that we will have the presence of, prior to the school actually open, you're going to see presence of the police department to re-educate people, you're coming into a school zone. I am more than satisfied based upon the facts, information we receive, that the HAWK system will take care of the needs of students at Dover High School. But I also feel with the support and help of the whole system working together, including, and I certainly would like to hear from the police chief and hope that they will always do what they've done in the past in addressing this issue.
Yes, if I could just touch base, everything Councilman Hutchinson just said is true. I met with Dr. Thompson, or Thomas, last week, and we are meeting with the high school principal. And we're going to actually be there Saturday the 16th for the, the semi-opening, and our officers will be there the first week of school. And in fact, they'll be at all the schools that we can.
Good. And that's, I appreciate all of that, because that was one of the things I wanted to make sure that we were, we, we, that would, that would be very helpful to have a police presence, particularly as this starts up. It is a new device. We have attempted some public relations efforts. The video that I have here and another one are available on the DELLDOT website. I think we have them linked to the city website. I don't know that the press has picked up on this very much to date. The other thing, I am not personally aware of how the high school would or would not use crossing guards. I know at many other schools throughout the state, at, at regular traffic signals, the, the crossing guards, you know, provide a supplemental measure of safety to, what we try to work with the crossing guards on is not so much for them to control the signal, but as the signal's working, to control the students and to make sure the students, make sure vehicles stop, and to make sure, and then that the students follow the, the pedestrian signals, which of course can only, they can only help with that when the crossing guards are there. The one other public relations effort we're doing is that one of my staff, or two of my staff actually are over at Dover High School right now with, I don't know which grade it is, but I think the grades have separate meetings. And so, we're, we have four separate meetings with four different grades there to educate the students about this device. And one of the things I told my staff as, as he was leaving to his meeting and I was coming here was, make sure you reemphasize like I emphasize to any group I am ever talking to about pedestrians crossing the street, is that never, ever, ever trust the signal, ever. I don't know how many students I've seen at the University of Delaware and elsewhere that are doing their thing, and they see the walk and they just go. And, and that, whether there's a walk or not a walk, that, nobody should ever do that. So, I, hopefully, we will convey that message as much as we can to the students, that they can never trust the signals to definitively stop the traffic. Even the, even again, going back to a regular traffic signal, there's, as we talked about with the red, people run red lights. Whether it's 1% or .1%, or whatever it is, people run red lights. So, you, you know, so hopefully, we'll get that message across that you can never trust the signal to, to stop, stop all vehicles.
Thank you, Mark. Councilman Lynn?
Just to advance the, the public awareness, we have members of the press here tonight. Perhaps if you could share the video with them to upload on their respective sites. And then Kay is here. If you could share it with Ms. Dietz-Sass back there, so we could upload it on the city Facebook page.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Good. I think I did have one more slide, but I think we pretty much covered all this. So, we talked about the full signal, high pedestrian traffic. I think the school district estimated up to potentially 90 students per day. We talked about the speed, so I think we, we covered all these things already. So, that's just the layout. I think you all are probably very familiar with this already. So, we're, so Route 8 is running east and west. On the top of the picture, the full signal is off here to the left side, and at Heatherfield here is the, the east access. So, that was all I have, and if there's any further questions, be happy to answer them.
See none. Thank you very much, Mark.
Great.
We appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Now, I can't emphasize enough the need for you to talk to, send a message to Secretary Bott and tell him we are exceptionally concerned about the safety of this high school traffic. And my personal belief is that a full traffic signal needs to be installed out by that high school. I don't think the HAWK is going to do much good. I don't think that 90 kids is an accurate estimate that are going to be walking to that school. I think they're going to be hundreds. And, you know, from my own viewpoint, if a traffic signal causes a rear-end crash and nobody's injured, I'm not too upset about it. But if a child gets hit by a car, I'm going to be real upset about it. And I want you to convey that message, but I think the rest of the council will allow me to discuss some of that.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item number four on the agenda this evening is the Legislative Finance and Administration Committee report from July 14th. Proposed financial reforms, Public Safety Fund. The item was deferred at the last meeting. Councilman Slaven?
Thank you, Council President Bonar. At the last meeting, I had mentioned that Mrs. Mitchell and I needed to kind of confer on this issue. We have since met, and I think we've kind of found our way within this. Just so council knows, this reform will take the form of a report that would be presented to council at two times. One is upon the delivery of the proposed budget in May, and one is upon the adoption of the budget in July, just to see where we are vis-à-vis before and after the budget. The report will show the expenses of the public safety, categories that we've identified, mapped against the revenues that we've identified to support those expenses, how much of a gap there is, and then what the trend is in closing that gap over a 20-year period that we agreed to do. And that said, I would move to accept the report of Legislative Finance Administration Committee for July 14th.
Second, Mrs. Williams. Any questions on the motion? Madam Clerk, probable.
Mr. Dixon?
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Berza?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Moving to item number nine on the agenda this evening, the evaluation of proposals for engineering services and project management for the Department of Public Works. Mr. Coney.
Thank you, Council President Bonar. The Department of Public Works uses various open-ended engineering contracts to support services within the Department of Public Works, as well as capital project development. They put out a request for proposals earlier this year. Eight firms supplied the necessary information to be evaluated. In the action form, the staff's evaluation is on page two. Based on that evaluation, staff is recommending the award of a three-year open-ended contract to both URS, JMT, and Panoni Associates, in accordance with their pricing schedules that were included in their submittals. And once these contracts, if they're approved by council, are in place, we will be bringing various design or engineering support contracts before council when necessary. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Which of the, of the, looks like about 10 firms, which of the three firms were the top three for location and for local standards in terms of who is proximate to Dover, has offices in Dover, and who is familiar with the local standards? Did the scores break down the same way that they did on this sheet, or they, who scored highest in those two categories?
I don't have the individual scoring categories, but I do know that both URS and Panoni have been working with city staff over the last three or four years, so they scored relatively high in that.
Do all of the firms have offices in Dover?
I don't think any of the firms actually have offices in Dover that we're recommending. If you look down the list, Cave and Landmark, I believe, are the only two that have a local office, but the others have offices within the state or the county.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Berza. Any other questions? No much pleasure of council.
Motion to support the state of recommendation.
Second by Mr. Dixon. Any questions on the motion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Berza?
No.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes, motion carries, seven to one. Item number 11, evaluation of bids for the Brandywine Pump Station Replacement. Mr. Coney.
Thank you. Staff is ready to move forward with a capital project known as the Brandywine Pump Station Replacement. This has been a project that was under design last year and is scheduled for construction. The bid package was advertised in accordance with our bid standards, our specifications and standards. Bids were opened on July 16th. We only received one bid for the project, but that project budget and bid is within the project budget. So staff is recommending award of a contract to JJID Incorporated for the City of Dover Brandywine Pump Station Replacement Project, bid number 14-0048PW, in the amount of $332,000.
Any questions, Seth? Mr. Lynn and Mr. Berza.
Mr. Coney, what was this project estimated as?
The amount budgeted for the project was $365,500.
So we're actually under what we budgeted for this?
We're within the budget, yes.
Berza.
Were the estimates prepared by Panoni Associates?
They were part of the capital project submission, so Panoni worked with the staff to prepare the budget estimate for this project, yes.
Would, if Panoni was part of it, would they have also submitted a bid, or would they have been disqualified from submitting a bid?
Panoni is a engineering consulting firm. They would not have done a construction bid for this project.
All right, so that's the difference.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just one follow-up. Is, is the city comfortable only accepting one bid for this type of work?
In this case, yes. We would always prefer to have multiple bids, but we advertise it. The, some of the bidders that we normally see are tied up on private work, so it's, some indications it's good that, that there is other work out there. In our case, it just leaves us with one bid to consider.
Okay, but in this case, it was within the budget framework established by the city at the beginning?
We think the bid is fair.
Okay.
Mr. Williams.
Mr. Coney, what does JJID stand for?
James Julian Incorporated of Delaware.
Thank you.
Mr. Hare.
I'll just ask this question once, it'll apply to all three. Once they get started, we're gonna, are they gonna come back and say, oh, by the way, we're $380,000 now?
Certainly, Mr. Hare, that's not the plan. So, no. If they find something that's unintended, and we have to have a change order that requires it to come back to council, we would have to come back to council, but we don't intend to be back.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just saying, that seems recently, in the last few months, seems to be the norm, that we get bids and they all come in under budget, under, and have to come back and give them more money, so I just...
There've been a few.
Yeah.
Any further questions? Lynn.
Do we know who the principals are in JJID?
Julian.
Julian, James Julian is his name. It's not the name of first, it's not the first name of two different people.
Okay, got it. I don't know that he's a principal anymore. I don't know if that's just the name of the company.
Got it.
I couldn't tell you.
Any other questions? See none, pleasure of council. Need a motion to approve or deny the staff recommendation?
Move to accept staff recommendations.
Second.
Second by Mr. Berza. Any questions on the motion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Berza?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Item number 11B, the evaluation of bids from McKee Road Pump Station Commuter, or Communiter, replacement. It's a new word for me. Scott, do you want to brief this?
Yes, this is a project that's been in the capital plan for a while. This was originally bid early last year and had to be rebid because of the project budget. The revised bid opening occurred on July 22nd of 2014. We received again one bid for the project. Initially, the project was a material-only cost, but due to the complexity of the project, after we received the first round of bids, it was, the bid scope was revised to include installation, so that city forces would not be the ones installing it. This project requires us to move money from two projects that came in under budget, so to make up for the proposed project budget, which was originally $47,300. Staff has completed two other projects. One project, project number WW1204, the Ball Tray Pump Station, originally budgeted at $104,100, was able to be completed for $6,400 in total. And then also, the Dover Brook Gardens Pump Station Upgrades, project number WW1205, was originally planned to be budgeted at $52,800. Staff has addressed the issues associated with this pump station for $4,500. By moving those two project budgets to this, we can accomplish the completion of the Communiter Replacement and close out all three projects in fiscal year 15. We did receive one bid from Blooming Glen Contractors Incorporated, as I said, in the amount of $147,110. And based on the staff review of the bid, we're recommending that that project authorization move forward with Blooming Glen Contractors Incorporated in the amount of $147,110 to complete the McKee Road Pump Station Communiter Replacement Project. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mrs. Williams, then Mr. Lynn.
Mr. Coney, what is the, what is the reason for the dichotomy between the CIP proposed bid by an outsourced contractor and the ones done by the city workers themselves?
In the, in the two projects that we completed, the Ball Tray Pump Station Upgrades, I believe the capital plan initially anticipated hiring a contractor to do that pump station upgrade. After the staff went through the pump station, they determined that it was something that city forces could do, because it's a relatively small pump station. They were able to complete those upgrades to satisfy the design parameters of, say, the next 20 years for the station at a relatively low cost. On the Dover Brook Gardens Pump Station Project Upgrade, the original assessment for the capital plan was done when Sunrock was operating, which was creating a substantial flow to the station. But the main problem with that station was a clogging related to some of the styrofoam use at Sunrock. Because that manufacturing facility is no longer in operation, there was several components of that upgrade that did not need to be constructed. So the scope of that work, in this case, actually reduced rather than expanded. So both of those projects could be completed relatively cheaply using in-house staff and parts associated with that. So, that's where the two projects came from.
Thank you. Your answers, if you don't mind, agenda, two more questions for me. The first one is, should that Sunrock building be used in the future, would the impact fees be put in place for whatever the use is going to be, because it's gonna have to, it's gonna have to meet the, the needs of an industrial customer again?
Yeah, in some cases, if there's a new industrial customer coming online and we anticipate the issues, then those will be part of the industrial design related to their wastewater.
My second part of the question is, is there any methodology, or is there any mechanism within your department to check and see if other CIP projects could possibly be downgraded so that they could be handled in a manner that these two projects were? Or has that already been done?
I think the, the annual budget review requires that the engineering staff look at each of these projects. There are always adjustments, or there should always be adjustments to projects to make sure that we're meeting the current conditions. When we develop a five-year plan, in some cases, that fifth year is uncertain, and as that fifth year moves forward, or fourth year moves forward, we need to tighten up the scopes so that they're reflective of the current needs. But in some cases, especially on the wastewater side, if a, if a business leaves or a new business comes into that basin, it can dramatically change the needs of a station or of a line associated with that. So, I think we do do a, a review of the capital plan annually. There has been a greater emphasis on spending some money upfront to make sure that our engineering estimates are more accurate moving forward. I think the, the, the Brandywine Pump Station is one where we, we have several pump stations that have been bid in the last year, where we've done replacements or repairs. Panoni was aware of all those bids that we received. We showed them the data. That was an accurate project budget as we move forward. Some of these others, there's a little bit more question associated with it. So the preference would be that we gravitate towards the Brandywine Station as a better model for us to continue with, some of these others.
Thank you.
Lynn, then Mr. Berza.
My questions just followed Ms. Williams' question, specifically with regard to the Ball Tray Pump Station, in that it appears there was almost $100,000 disparity between what we actually budgeted for and then what it actually cost. And I'm curious if this is indicative of a larger kind of budgetary issue wherein we're either severely under-budgeting for projects or over-budgeting for projects. So I guess it's more of a question for Ms. Mitchell, whether this is more of an endemic problem. Are you seeing this throughout the budget, where we are having significant disparities with regard to estimates?
I, I would say, yes, we are, but it's not, it's not all the projects. It's maybe a handful of the projects. It seems like we really miss, but not all, the majority of them were close, but there just seems to be some that are really off.
Why does this continue to happen?
I couldn't answer that. The engineers would have to answer that. I have asked those same questions during the budget process myself. I've also asked as to whether we're evaluating how well the engineers are actually helping us with our estimates, too.
Being proactive, forward-thinking to the next budgetary cycle, do you have any suggestions about what steps we can take to preclude this from happening in the future?
What I've talked to staff about doing is getting all their engineering done prior to starting the budget process in January, having all that done by December, so they have good estimates to put into the next year's budget. So have all the estimates done in the first year, but have it done by December, because we start the budget process. So, and then we can get the CIP pulled together for the following year. That's what I've asked them to do.
And I'm just curious if we could parlay that and have Mr. Slavin take a look at that on his agenda, and perhaps make this policy that that's done every year? If Mr. Slavin would be willing to undertake that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berza.
The, the spreadsheet that's included in this, in the action form, does, is the application for this project, all three of these wastewater projects down here, or just the McKee Road project?
The request is to award the contract for the Communiter Project, but the spreadsheet is shown, so we can tell you how we're paying for it. We have to amend the project budget from $47,300 to $147,110, and this dictates where the money would come from.
And the money is coming from the, are projects 1204 and 1205, are they complete now?
Yes.
So basically, the budgetary savings is, we thought it would cost 104, it really costed six, so there's 97, 98 we didn't have before. And the 52 was really four, so that's another 48 we picked up.
Right, and this, these monies are in the Capital Improvement and Extension Fund, which is separate of the Operating Fund.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Berza. Mr. Slavin.
Okay, thank you. Just two quick items. First, I, I don't want to lose the opportunity that, you know, when we have a project budgeted at 104,1, and we are able to address it for 6,400, I want to say thank you for being able to get that done and actually saving that money. And just to refresh my memory, what, you said this was rebid. This is the second time we bid this out. What was the result of the first bid, and why did we rebid it?
The first bid, I believe, was still out of budget, but it only included the mechanical components of it, so we would have had to have still done the installation. So we were already out of budget with the, with the project cost, and staff felt that after the initial bid, that they, it was beyond our ability. We actually did, on the, on the punch-and-run pump station, there was a Communiter Replacement that happened probably about 10 years ago. In that case, it was you pulled the old piece of equipment out, and the new piece of equipment fit perfectly into the slot from the old piece of equipment. In this case, I believe that there are modifications that need to be done upstream and downstream of this, this piece of equipment, and then there are electrical upgrades and all that stuff that are associated with it. So, initially, staff anticipated it would be as simple as the last time we did it. In the end, it was not.
And is that why we see the difference between 47.3 and 147.1?
I'm, I'm almost 100% sure. It's not written in that, that way, but yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slavin. Mr. Hare.
Maybe you just answered this, I don't know. But I guess, I guess my question is, I just, the engineers put these budgets together, right? Our engineers?
The, the project budgets are put together by a combination of people. In some cases, it's staff that's put, put together the project budget. In some cases, it is estimated by a third-party consulting engineer.
Okay, I guess when, where I'm missing it is, okay, I need $156,000 to do this. Oh, by the way, it's only, now, it only costs 10. I can see if they said it's 156, and it only costs 120, but 156,000, and it costs 10.
Right.
And they're off. I mean, that's...
Neither of these, any of these three projects are not where we would like to be. We can't estimate under, and we can't estimate over. Both of these are within, are outside of the margin of acceptable project budget.
But I guess they didn't think, I mean, if they'd have said it was gonna be 40, and it costs 10, but for 100, I don't know, it just seems like somebody missed it. And then we, we budgeted for that, which might have been money that could have been budgeted for... budgeted for something else. And now, the money that they missed it by is going into something that was missed on another project, to the bad, missed it to the good, and now we missed it to the bad.
In this case, as we were able to line up three misses. I, that's, we, we had to wait to complete a couple of projects to bring this forward so we could complete it within the authorized budget of the Capital Improvement Program. And that's what we did. We waited until we had funding available to come to council and say, we're under on these projects, but we're over on this project. So, the net is, we'd like to move money so that we can close out all three projects. Estimating is not a perfect science.
No, it's not a perfect science.
Slavin.
I want to pivot a little bit. You have a line in here that says, if these are not replaced, the city is at risk of having pump issues. Can you just address that risk that we have in kind of layman's terms?
Yeah.
What we're facing if we don't go forward?
The Combinator is basically a grinder that is ahead of the pump system. So, the average person wouldn't think of the stuff that goes down the sanitary sewer system like concrete, bricks, shoes, clothes, you name it. This piece of equipment goes ahead of the pumps and basically pulverizes anything that hits the equipment so that it can actually be passed through the pump on down the system. Otherwise, it would get stuck in the pump. The pump would stop working. The staff has to go out, take the pump apart, send it out for repairs. So, basically, this is a safety and protection measure that goes ahead of your pump system.
And these motors have been running 24/7 for how long?
This station has been in service since, gosh, I would say probably 1992, 1993, so it's about 20 years old. Thank you.
Mrs. Williams.
I believe, Mr. Cunnig, when I first came on council, the Punch and Run Pump Station went down with, with the grinder being blown apart. And that caused more than just, that caused flooding, didn't it?
If it's bad enough, it can. It's not typical, but it...
Well, it stayed in my memory.
The worst-case, yeah, the worst-case scenario is the Combinator doesn't work, it jams up all the pumps, and the station overflows.
Right. That's, that, I didn't mean flooding, I meant an overflow.
Yes.
Yeah. So, and I remember it being a very, very serious problem at the time. Is that not correct?
Yes, we could get into environmental fines if we get to the point where we're dumping wastewater outside of the station onto the ground.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Any further questions from staff? None. Pleasure, council.
Move to approve.
Second. By Mrs. Williams, second by Mr. Hutchison. Any questions on the motion? None. Madam Clark, call the roll.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Perza?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. I want to apologize to council, I, this moment, Mr. Perza, I want to apologize to council. I happened to glance out at the audience and I see there are several small heads poking above chairs. Given the lateness of the hour, with council's indulgence, I would like to move item number 12 on our agenda, our next item, so that we can get some of these nodding heads home safely, three heads, rather than having to put up with this boredom. Seeing that we will have, Tim Malaney, would you please come down to the podium? Folks, I'd like to introduce you to Tim Malaney, the new Fire Marshal for the City of Dover. Tim was selected... Tim comes from a long history of law enforcement and public service in the City of Dover. And Tim, we're very, very happy to have you here. I want to congratulate you and welcome you aboard as the successor to Dave Truax. You've got some big shoes to fill. Dave did a marvelous job before he retired. If there are no questions, Mr. Malaney, it's a pleasure, council, on this nomination.
Move for acceptance.
Second.
Second.
By Mr. Hutchison, second by Mr. Lynn. Any questions on the motion? Madam Clark, call the roll.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Perza?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for your indulgence, council. Now, you can take your nodding heads and take them, take them safely. Thank you very much for your, for your indulgence.
Council President. Yes, may I, yes. I note that we have Mr. Malaney and his family. Perhaps we could just pause for some brief pictures.
Sure, absolutely.
I know it's probably a big event for them. They probably want to memorialize it with some photographs, so.
We can take them out there.
Are you sure?
All right, whatever you, you're welcome. Again, thank you very much. We'll move back to the agenda, item number 11C, the evaluation bids for the concrete construction and replacement, Phase 1.
Scott. Thank you, Council President Bowden. This is a unit-priced contract related to our capital investment plan for sidewalk replacement. The address is shown in the action form is the running list of concrete replacement that we would like to complete throughout the city. We did receive five bids for this work, the low bid of $64,018. From Fontana Concrete Construction Incorporated is the one that staff is recommending. As I said, this is a unit-priced contract, and that allows the Director of Public Works to add or delete from the contract with their authorization in the concurrence of the city manager to match available funding. So, we are recommending that this project move forward at the unit price listed with Fontana Construction Incorporated for the amount of $64,018 based on the unit prices bid in the contract. Have it answer any questions.
Mrs. Williams.
Mr. Cunnig, one of these bids is four times higher than all the rest. Do we know why? Did they see something that nobody else saw?
In some cases, contractors will put bids in just to see if they get the work. And in this case, thankfully, that was not the low bid.
Thank you.
Perza.
I want to go take a real quick timeout on this issue, kind of finish up my comment before we took the little break there.
Sure.
The last project we voted was the McKee Run Pump Station. I think everybody more or less agrees that that had to be done. I think that's important that we get that taken care of so we don't have any ongoing issues. I think some of the undercurrent concern is that, certainly, at least, my personal subjective belief, it seems like various items that come up through the years where we're budgeting certain amounts, only found the amounts are changing drastically. And in this circumstance, where you have one for 100, it comes in at 6, and then 52 at 4, it, it opens the door that you can manipulate what's going on in the budget, knowing that perhaps we wouldn't have approved the common, whatever the thing was called, the Combinator commuter replacement valve or whatever the deal was that turned out to be 150. If the engineers or the staff are basically saying, I know these guys aren't going to approve this, so I'm going to lowball it at 50, but then overestimate everywhere else knowing that we're eventually going to consolidate savings in that to get what they want, I think it opens the door to manipulation. And we spend a lot of time in March and April and May arguing over projects and, and who's to say that if we found another $99,000, we would necessarily put it into this project versus any other project in the world that we had going on that we spent a lot of time talking about. So, I'm not questioning the need to do this project, and it may be $150,000, that's what it may be. It just feels like there's, we just get surprised by, oh, we found 100,000, let's fix it. And I think there's a concern that if that's the case and they know we're going to do that, it makes it manipulable that the persons putting together the budget could do that knowing that they really want this project and they can adjust the numbers to get what they want without us realizing it. So, that was my only comment, but it, it would be nice to get a better control of these estimates because some of these were just $100,000 off repeatedly. And that's my concern. But to that said, I still voted yes. I think we need to do the Combinator, whatever the...
Grinder, grinder.
Yeah, the grinder. I agree, we needed to do the grinder, but I just, there's some concern. I think you're picking that up from a lot of the other questions you're getting.
Thank you, Mr. Perza. So, no further questions. What's your pleasure, council?
Move to accept staff recommendation.
Second.
By Mr. Lynn, second by Dixon.
Question, is this Phase 2 or Phase 1?
This is Phase 1 we're talking about.
Because the question Ms. Williams asked was about, somebody mentioned 64,000. I thought that was Phase 2.
The expenditure required on the concrete construction replacement, Phase 1, is $64,018.
Okay. And then 100 is the Phase 2, they're backwards in the packet?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
Further questions on the motion?
Sorry, thank you.
Madam Clark, call the roll.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Perza?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Item number 11D, evaluations bid, evaluation of bids for concrete construction replacement, Phase 2. Mr. Cunnig.
Thank you. The locations identified in this action form were locations that staff requested funding from area legislators on, in this past fiscal year. All this work is on state roads, and because it's under the Community Transportation Fund, has to be bid at state wage rates. So, that's the difference in the wage component of this. The locations identified are the ones that we plan to move forward with, and this is a kind of a blending of funding between community transportation funds, internal street program funds, and also the FY14 concrete program leftover funds. So, there is a blending of this. This is, again, a unit-priced contract, and those contracts allow us to add or delete work depending on levels of funding. Happy to answer any other questions.
Any questions of, Mrs. Williams?
The brickwork that's being replaced, Mr. Cunnig, is that the brickwork that they put in a few years ago?
At which location?
Well, it's in different locations all over the downtown area.
I believe if, if you look at some of the language, it's removing the brickwork and putting concrete back. So, there are several locations downtown where there is old brick. The home, the property owners were given a choice. If you want the brick back, then you'll have to pay the differential. If you don't want the brick back, we will remove the brick and put concrete in at...
Would you help me out? Why do we put, because that whole cobblestone thing left a lot of us kind of aghast as to why it was happening anyway.
In which component or where in the downtown?
Well, I believe that the justification was historic.
Yes.
To make it feel more historic. The bad news was everybody was tripping and falling.
Yeah, the cobblestones that you see on Lockerman Street, very few people can walk on them because there's a separation between them. But that was a landscaping technique that was taken through various committees and authorized as part of that transportation enhancement project years ago.
So, my question is, are we taking out any of that stuff?
No, these are, these are mostly on state and division, some of it's State and Division Street, a lot of it's on State Street where you see some of the older brick sidewalks.
Well, it's not that I don't want people to fall. I don't.
Right.
But the problem was that had just been put in less than 10, 12 years ago.
No, this is...
That was my concern.
Yeah, this is not stuff that's been put in recently.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lynn and Mr. Perza.
Aesthetically, are we going to have a hodgepodge where there's, there's some...
We have that now.
Brick and some, but it's going to get even worse if we give people the election, hey, you can take the brick, you can keep your brick if you pay the differential.
Nobody has elected to do that at this point.
Everybody wants concrete.
Nobody wants the cost of the brick. Nobody wants to foot the cost of the brick, to be honest.
Okay.
That answer your questions, Perza?
Yeah, my, I, I don't know where these specific locations are, but I'm imagining that we have brick sidewalk that converts over to the white concrete. It flips back and forth as you walk up, and we're going to look ridiculous. And all this marketing we do in a historic Dover, and we're going to have like this white, red, white, red sidewalks all over the place. I'm hesitant on kind of authorizing that without knowing for sure what we're looking at.
These locations, yeah.
I have not been to these locations. I don't know what they look like. Now, granted, I don't want to trip and fall when I'm walking down the street either, but I also don't want it to look ridiculous.
Almost every one of these, you would trip and fall if you're not watching where you're going.
I can tell you from experience, one of the locations that you're mentioning, I was tripping and falling on in about 1979 and hasn't been fixed since. So, it's far past due to be repaired. Issue was the property owner didn't want it repaired in front of the house. I believe that's correct. Is that not, Mr. Cunnig?
We have had times when the property owner was not cooperative.
Slavin.
Just a matter, a question about Americans with Disabilities Act. Once we replace the sidewalk with concrete, we're making that up to the current ADA specification, correct? Do we then, we then have to ensure a path of travel? Do we not?
In most of the locations in the city, especially on the state roads, Delbat is responsible for the ADA compliance at the intersections, which is where most of the issues are. We have not run into compliance issues, to my knowledge, on straightaways, which most of these are straightaways. If they're driveways, which on State Street, there's very few driveways off of that, we have some compliance issues where we might have to replace aprons. But we, we're required to remedy any non-compliance when we do this.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Any other questions of staff?
Oh.
Ms. Williams.
Go ahead.
No, I'll, I'll wait till the end.
The only thing about State Street sidewalks is they always get elevated by tree roots.
Yes.
So, what is the shelf life of the State Street sidewalk before it starts to rise to the heavens?
It depends on the tree because in some cases, we've had to cut the tree down. So, when we go in to do this work, there is potential that some of the trees, the roots, the root mat will be too high, and it'll either have to be trimmed or the tree may have to be cut down.
Does that come to be a problem?
It's not a problem for the city. In some cases, it's a problem for some of the property owners, but, you know, we try and work out those issues ahead of, ahead of us taking up the sidewalk.
Well, yeah, because some of the sidewalks start looking like they have pipes. Yeah.
Perza.
For the sake of uniformity, what would be the competing comparative repair cost of the brick? Is, if it's 100,000 to take the brick out, put in concrete, what's the cost to fix the brick so it at least looks the same everywhere else? Is it astronomical or has nobody even looked?
We don't have a bid, but my guess is it's 50% more expensive, and then there's more maintenance costs.
Talking about the cost of the bricks.
Yeah.
And did the city factor in, whatever it was, 20 years ago, whenever the city did that, did they factor in maintenance costs or is it just never budgeted and...
No, we did not. I, I, we did not do any analysis on maintenance costs, I'm pretty sure.
I, I just don't like the Band-Aid approach. We're doing it here, we're doing it here, and there's no uniform plan, and it just kind of bugs me. So, I would, it'd be nice to do this, do a block and do it right.
Thank you, Mr. Perza. Mr. Hair, did you have a comment?
Well, you, you can put in stamped concrete where it looks like brick, too. And, but the other question was, since 1979, have you figured out how to do that, navigate that area without tripping?
I cross the street.
Okay. You figured it out then. I just want to make sure. I don't want you to get hurt.
Mr. Cunnig, you turned green and he said stamped concrete.
I just, you know, we're trying to keep costs in control. So...
Any further questions?
We can do whatever anybody would like.
See none?
Move the exception to stamp.
Thank you, Mr. Slavin. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Herr, second. Any questions on the motion? Madam Clark, call the roll.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Perza?
Yeah, not yet. No.
Mr. Slavin? Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Concretely, yes.
Mr. Herr?
It's a hard decision, yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. That brings us down to council members' announcements. First things first, happy belated birthday to Councilman Lynn, which was August 3rd. And happy birthday, and Councilman Slavin, yeah, this was yesterday, I believe. And there were lots of nice pictures, I think, of you on some of the social media with your family, sharing that as well. Any other members of council have an announcement tonight? Any none? Mr. Hutchison.
I would like to thank the city manager and workforce that did the work at Silver Lake, at the bridge on both sides there by the glens. It is so nice to come down by Silver Lake and actually see the water. And I know the work is not done yet, but we need to get it done because quite frankly, that is a landmark right there. It's a beautiful piece coming in. It's a gateway for doing. And I just thank you and the workforce that did the work.
I won't tell you what my wife said as we drove into town on Saturday, Hutch, because she might disagree with me.
Well, you can tell her to come see me if she wants to do this.
All right, that's the end of this evening's council session. If there are no other announcements this evening, we stand adjourned.